Do we want to start without him?
I told him.
Do we want to start without him?
Not the other way.
No, what does? Is he on? I know he's dealing with some family issues, so. Kick it off. We call to order in the Clinton City Council meeting, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Here.
Shemmers.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council and committee of the whole meetings of April 27th, 2021, and they be approved as published on May 8th, 2021. I move this be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right. I will convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for concrete street rehab horseshoe drive neighborhood project N dash 2021. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens online or in the room that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six will unmute you. Is there any council members that would like to address this public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for concrete street rehab horseshoe drive neighborhood project N 2021. I move that this be adopted as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry.
We were just commenting that for the North End folks, this is a very bad, bad road, and so we're very happy that this Jason squeezed it onto the list for this, so it would be much appreciated by the folks up there.
Yep. Very nice little neighborhood, too.
Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
I will convene a public hearing concerning proposed amendments to the FY 2021, or 2020-2021 city operating budget. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, Your Honor.
Is there any citizens in the room or on the line that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? All right, hearing none. We will close the public hearing. Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes, sir.
Could you read this one for me?
Sure. I have a resolution amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
We're rolling. All right, Lisa, did you receive any yellow cards or?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there any citizens that would like to address the council that are in the room? Is there any citizens online that would like to address the council? Star six will unmute you. All right, hearing none. We'll move on to consent agenda. Oh geez. Councilmember Obrin.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to pull items V and items, or 6V and 6Z.
6V. 6Z.
I'd also like to pull 6 uniform.
6 unicorn. Oh, sorry. Victor Zulu. Anything else from council? Discussion on consent agenda.
6R.
Okay.
I'll just make a note about 6T. I think that's cool.
You want to pull it?
Uh, that's enough, unless you guys want to talk about it.
We can pull it. Okay, 6T.
And then 6Q. That's it.
All right. Any other discussion from council? All right, can we please have a roll call vote on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Yes.
Who's on?
John.
Amen.
Now that everybody took all your reading parts. Councilmember Kearns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the claims be received, approved, and placed on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution of intent to accept bid and setting public hearing on the proposed sale of 422 8th Avenue South. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution setting public hearing on the proposed sale of city-owned lots 432 9th Avenue South and 434 9th Avenue South. I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Sealy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the final subdivision plat of Liberty Square subdivision number two in Clinton, Iowa. I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So this is the final piece of Liberty Square.
Very well.
So we are now able, we now did our due diligence on the whole stretch of Liberty Square, so we're able to get this out there and hopefully attract some, some businesses to enter in that corridor.
The next piece we'll be bringing back to you is marketing strategy and best way to put the subdivisions out and then allow developers to subdivide those subdivisions, but get the facts out like the acres and the square footage from stem to stem, if you will, as well as we talked about before, coming back to you with the Liberty Square overlay, and we'll talk about best way for entrances, approaches, how to set those stuff up. So we did the sign part, but we're going to bring that whole thing back to you here very shortly.
So any other discussion? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing mayor to sign authorizing letter or authorization letter to request a .gov domain. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
This is actually from the League of Cities. Had thrown that out there and Lisa had read through it, and we took a look and got with Josh, and this will basically take us from a .us to .gov and put everybody in, on the same piece, and it won't change. As Susie had an issue or a question about the library, but all their emails will still flow the same way. It'll just now be .gov on there. Same with websites and stuff.
There's a lot of municipalities that do this. I think it's just small things that make a big difference.
Yep, yep. Doing the little things right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman. Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution confirming adjusted city council appointments for 2021. I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
Second, sorry.
We have a motion and a second. Basically, with, with the council member Alcee resigning her seat, we just had to make some adjustments so that we had some folks to fill in. Really, the, the only adjustment was the grant committee being removed, and then council member Kearns is going to serve on the PRAB for us at the moment, and we'll be making, we could be making more changes here later this year, depending on what happens with elections and all that kind of stuff. So this will just kind of sit like this for now, and we'll, we'll readdress that when we need to, so. Any other discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving an agreement with the Clinton Area Chamber of Commerce for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
Did you get that?
Tiger's the runner.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I'll just tee it up for the rest of you, but we have some extinguished, distinguished visitors here, and I would just say, you know, we've had a, a great relationship. I've just been here a little over four years, but great relationship with the chamber, the Clinton Visitor Bureau, great to have Rich and Leslie in the audience as well, and just basically continuing on the same relationship for the next five years and then some. But we have to do this according to code, so we want to make sure we updated that and make sure we're providing those dollars that may allow the chamber and Leslie to do her thing, which is going to bring more and more people to Clinton, so we're excited about that, to include more fishing trips, if you want to.
Any other discussion on this?
So the actual funding piece did not change. Really, this just was the exact same thing renewed, right?
No, it had new dates.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Yes.
Well, it looks like you missed a couple here. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Looks good.
All right.
We appreciate all you guys do for the city.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell. Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have an ordinance for a second consideration.
Please read the title.
In ordinance amending chapter 104, registration of vacant and/or abandoned buildings of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Iowa. I move this, uh, well.
Second.
Thank you. I moved too fast.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
No.
Connell.
No.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, moving to unfinished business. We'll start. Councilmember Kearns, 6 Victor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The reason I brought up Victor was because I think we need to give a shout out to the people that raised the money, so I'm going to turn it over to you to do that.
Oh, the Hope in Action Group is a, a local group in town that does a lot of great things for the community and their neighborhoods, and they raised seventeen thousand dollars to put towards this bathroom at Clinton Park, as they utilize this park quite a bit, and, and many people do if you go by there in the summer. So I think this is a cool project. We had the council allocated funds, was it last fiscal year or the year before?
Year before.
Two years.
Two fiscal years ago for this. So it's, it's really nice to see this project come to fruition. The bid came in under projected cost, which is always nice, and then we also have a shout out to our Public Works guys, because they're going to be doing some of the work here, too, and as we've got some skilled, skilled folks that are working for us in the city that can handle some of this stuff. So really going to be a, a city, community, and then, and then a developer partnership too on this, so just exciting to see this happen.
And when will it be done, Matt?
Yeah, we're probably going into spring, just because of some challenges with what they're going to have to do, because one of the biggest pieces running the sewer has to head over to 4th Street at a slope, three hundred feet.
Okay.
Yeah. But our goal is to be able to have a, we want to do it this fall, but most likely ribbon cutting ceremony in the spring.
Okay.
2022.
So the work will start this fall, but probably not completed until next.
Check.
Good. Cool. All right.
The next one I pulled was.
We had a motion to move that one forward.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is any other discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Kearns.
Okay, 6Z is the resolution for the change order for the demolition of 135th Avenue South, and I guess I just would like for Jason to talk a little bit about this, because I know that the neighbors are kind of concerned.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Craft, City Engineer. Yeah, with regard to the change order, we developed this project thinking that we had crawl space. We knew we had a crawl space at Albert's Jewelers, and we presumed there was a crawl space under the building to the west, but we knew we had a full basement under the building we're demolishing. So we're almost done demolishing the building, since it had a full basement to the west at the old, I don't know.
It was a cafe or something, wasn't it?
I don't remember what it was. I want to say Bluebird Cafe.
Yeah. So that's it, yeah.
So we reached out to the guy, and we, we finally got into his basement around the time we had bid this out, so we knew we needed to fill the basement of the building we're demolishing with, with concrete to reduce the pressure on the basement wall of the neighboring building. So we have nineteen thousand dollars more of, of concrete. I mean, there was no, there was no getting around that, so we have instead of filling the basement with like three foot of rock and then four foot of concrete, we're filling it with seven and a half foot of concrete, so. Ton of concrete, that's the only thing we could do. We're sloping the top of the concrete to the south and the north. About thirty foot of it will flow north onto the sidewalk. We'll sod that, and the rest of it's going to flow south. I'm sorry, I had that backwards, but the rest is going to flow back into the alley, so there's no extra cost for the grading of all of that. The other sixty-five hundred here was a post that was installed from the sidewalk up to the roof of the building to the west, but the building's in pretty good shape. There's just a fracture on the one corner of that building, so we didn't want it to move at all, so we installed a structural post from the sidewalk to the roof to hold that vertically.
A fracture that was there before we arrived.
We didn't do anything. Yeah, that fracture's probably fifty years old or better. It was just a, you can see it from the, from the sidewalk. So we're talking to that building owner. He's, he lives in Colorado, but he's pretty responsive. There are some repairs that he should make to the corner of his building before that post can be safely removed. So working on him with that. So most of this was related to making sure that we didn't do damage to the building to the west. That's necessary. In fact, we've done the work, because we, we need to progress through this project. It's astronomical, and I think the lesson that we've learned is to get working through these abandoned structures as quickly as we can before this happens. Once the roof was gone last year, it didn't take any time to ruin the building in such a way that we had to demolish it. There was no choice but to demolish it. And as you imagine, demolishing a building between two standing structures, it's very tedious. They did most of it by hand. Lawson's been really good to work with. They have taken quite a bit more time than I think they ever imagined, but they're almost done now. All we have left is the first floor back wall and a couple parts of the, the floor, like the first floor at the front of the building, including a, a beam that spans between Albert's Jewelers and the, I think you wanted me to get into this, right?
Well, I mean, that was the, the, that and the water in their basement was the concerns that, yeah, that were asked of me.
Okay, so the beam's going to be removed safely. We've been consulting with Ali, our structural engineer, on call, so that beam's going to be pulled out of there probably this week, and there'll be no remaining pieces connected to the Albert's building at all. So, and we just need to find out, we need to figure out what we're going to do to the side of that building. Like, we'll have to side it. We'll have to get a company, probably a local company, to put some steel siding on that building to weatherproof it. But no further concerns. We, we had to get rid of the middle building in order to save the two, the one on either side.
I, I've got a question. I mean, you said, because this is very expensive teardown. I mean, this is half our normal budget for tearing down buildings, and you said lessons learned. How could we've gotten to this building quicker to save two hundred thousand dollars or something? I mean, this is just insane amount of money.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we could have, so.
Well, you said there were lessons learned. I'm curious.
I didn't. I learned a lesson that if there's anything we can do to save a building before it happens. I presume this is a legal and, and administration issue where if someone, and it comes back to perhaps the property maintenance code.
Well, and I guess that's my question. What could we do different so this doesn't happen?
So if we could turn back time, we would actually had the property maintenance code in effect to actually ensure that the current owners at the time would have shored up the roof and taken care of it, because by the time we do a process, whether we do a tax cert or 657A, by the time do the process, it was already too late.
So I get, I guess that just kind of just support my, so the property maintenance code would have.
Yeah. They literally had swimming pools catching the water in the building.
And that's been for years.
Yes. Yep. And so the other, the other part that was kind of gentle in this as well is if the city would have done nothing, we would have had an issue with both the buildings that Jason just articulated. So it was prudent that we actually stepped into this case, not that we want to, but it was prudent, because now we actually saved those buildings, and now we have a chance to be able to have an open market, if you will, outside the building, maybe seating areas, maybe a, a small restaurant, a bistro, whatever you name it, and be able to have that still there. And so it was kind of a decisive point we had to make, not that we want to, but if we could turn back time, we would have started off in saying, you need to do this now. And now I think what we have is really good cannon fodder for Pat and his team, because now we have this real world example. We can say, this is why we're doing this. We, we need you to do something to this building now.
Well, we do have other buildings that are not far behind this.
Yes. Well, and, and I would say the lessons we've been learning along that way is we've had the the discussion with some of the business owners. They've been receptive. We've been using this as an example to say, hey, we need you to kind of move forward and get this stuff done because we don't want to go, once you go past a certain point, you can't return. And that's what happened in this building.
Well, we couldn't afford too many more of these.
No.
Not that we can afford any of them, but.
Thank you, Jason.
I would make a motion to move it forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Rich.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman. Six uniform.
Yeah, I pulled this one because in talking to Matt was the, I'd like to highlight the corporation from the company and also give the citizens an idea of how this is going to work in that area.
Yeah, it was my fault, Mr. Craft. I told him this was a great, you were very excited when.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
I think, though, it's going to be a bit challenging for the traveling public. There's a lot of traffic on 13th Avenue North. So we've dealt with all of the property owners along that area between Nelson Corp., all the way out to the middle school. And we've talked about the project a lot. But this first phase of the project is between Springdale Drive and 11th Street. We're going to restrict that to only allow westbound traffic through that area. The eastbound traffic will be local traffic only as we need to rebuild the intersection of Springdale Drive, including all new traffic signals, widen the radius, and just smooth out the intersection, reconstruct all the pavement sidewalks, similar to what we did on Main Avenue. So as we do that, for the next 50 days, starting next Monday, there'll only be westbound traffic coming through that intersection. Any eastbound traffic will be detoured down 11th Street, still be able to access medical associates, everything, Dollar General, but they'll have to come from the west to the east. So this, this he's been here, we've worked pretty closely with Dollar General for the next, last few months with Lynch Dallas's help. We're going to relocate their driveway to the east, their east property line, and then install a median along Dollar General so that cars don't get hung up there trying to turn left. I can share the plans with anybody that wants them. It's kind of confusing to talk about. The main thing is for this project, next week, we're going to start with work on Springdale and traffic will be a little messed up. We'll have detours in place and if anybody has any questions, just have them call our office. We'll talk them through it. We already have.
And then how was it working with Dollar General to get this done?
Great. Yeah. Kyle from Lynch Dallas found the right person to talk to and I met with the district manager last week and they're very happy about it. They're happy with it and they said if they have trouble making deliveries with this driveway relocation, they'll just move to 4:00 AM semi deliveries and they have no issues. They think it's a great thing.
All right. I make a motion that we move this forward.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Sealy, six Romeo.
I just needed to understand, and I'm sorry. So this is because we're sharing confidential information back and forth on individual customer usage and that's the only reason for this.
Yep. And the bigger scope is, you know, we started the franchise fee over a year ago. REC, working with them, we took a little longer because they had, they weren't set up for the billing process like Alliance. So we're working through that process as well as working through figuring out who's where because it's not as simple just to say, here's our customer base.
Yep.
So they're going to have to be able to share that with us. We look at it and then in turn say, yep, that's our parameters where we're at. These are the folks that then will then have the franchise fee on them.
Okay. Very well. I'll make a motion to approve this.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Sealy.
Yes.
Connell.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Sealy, six Tango.
Yeah, I just thought this was kind of neat. Yeah. Because it's, what's our probabilities here?
I always like to go with 51%.
Okay.
Fair to partly classify.
Oh, it's a big chunk of money. And I think the fact that we're going to pledge so much should look favorably, right? Was that the kind of thought behind it?
Yeah. And there's a couple of pieces is, we're going to hear from Zane later on, but with this, basically getting 13th Avenue North Trail in, the thought with the Trails Committee was then to shoot down what would be the 14th Street future, but as a path and take it to the Bickelhoff Arboretum. So when the mayor and I met with Brian Kelly and crew and they, we won't want to, you know, throw out their surprise, there's a lot of new stuff that's going to happen at the Bickelhoff Arboretum. It made great sense to have a multimodal trail that would actually take you both down to Bickelhoff and then back up to the Erickson Center and then now you're on 13th. So it just expands the ability for our folks to be out and about doing stuff in a great area because that's really great terrain because the cross-country folks will tell you, as you come down through the Erickson Center, down to Second Avenue South, safely cross over and then enter into the.